Okay, I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being recorded and posted to the Township video website. You can submit public comment by email to glipincott@westrockhill township.org. We will take public comment until the end of the meeting and we will read the public comment prior to the vote or at the end of the meeting depending on what is appropriate. Thank you. And I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 18th Board of Supervisors meeting 2023. Happy New Year. And I would like to lead off by pledging to the flag saying, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, first on the agenda is public comment. If anybody has any public comment, please identify yourself and state your name and address. I don't see any on my screen here. Greg, do you?
No, there I don't have any public comments for agenda items.
That's right. Second on the agenda item here is announcements. I will announce we are going to be holding an executive session after the meeting tonight to discuss some real estate matters and I also have a couple personnel matters we need to discuss as well. Moving forward, the consent agenda for this month has the first one on there was the December 21st, 2022 meeting minutes, the January 3rd reorganization meeting minutes, the wind plan review, status escrow, releases of vouchers and vouchers, emergency services reports, the building zoning and building permit report, public works report, the conservation committee report, and Greg, I will ask you to read the treasure report and the payment of bills, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The general fund has $728,351.74. Highway eight is $6,127.67. Open space, $1,320,841.56. The park fund, $42,683.80. The equipment fund, $1,625.1. Highway capital, $131.65. Streetlight, $35,352.85. The reserve funds, the general fund reserve, $452,258.17. The American Rescue Plan funds, $550,277.20. Open space Manderfield, $41,438.74. The sewage maintenance fund, $189,893. The stormwater fund, $11,481.83. And the escrow funds, $2,409,204.59.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, if there's no questions from my fellow two board of supervisors, I would ask or entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moving forward, I have no issues.
Okay, motion's been made by David. Second by Hal.
As usual, thank you to Sellersville, Telford, Tylerport, and Trumblyrsville for the fire coverage.
Here, here. All right, motion's been made second. All those signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the on the list is confirmed appointments. We don't have any confirmed appointments for tonight that I see. Moving forward is the committee reports is next. The planning commission report, Mr. Chris Durstein.
Yes, sir. How's everybody doing?
How are you, Chris?
I'm doing fine. Thank you. So planning commission met last Tuesday. We had three applicants on the agenda and we also had the our reorganization. So our reorganization for 2023 is the same configuration as 2022. I am the chairman. Alex Almer is the vice chairman and Tim Ruth is the secretary. So our first applicant last week was for a lot line adjustment on Tower Road. The Kazikis are the property owner seeking the this lot line adjustment. They're trying to pick up some property from neighboring properties apparently to deal with some nonconformities that they have out there. So in RC zone, they had a had a few waiver requests that PC was comparable with. And PC is recommending conditional final plan approval. Any questions on that one?
I have none.
No questions.
All right. So the second applicant was actually the same folks. They are looking to do a lot consolidation. They have two joining properties on Old Bethlehem Pike or is that Bethlehem Pike? I'm sorry. Old 309. They're actually the owners of the Udra granite tile there. So the property is next door to that. I guess just to the north of that. So they have two properties. One property has a home. The other property has a garage and some sort of trailer. They want to combine the two lots. It sounds like they are doing this to deal with a stormwater management issue violation that they had out there. So again, it's, you know, it's just a pretty simple request here. So the waivers were simple as well. You know, we're fine with that and we are recommending conditional preliminary final on that plan as well.
Okay.
So that was them. Any questions?
No.
No questions.
All right. So the third applicant was select properties. They brought in a sketch plan to develop a just about an eight acre tract on the north side of a Holiday House road about 500 feet in from Washington Avenue. They want to throw about 13 single family homes. 12 of these homes would be on a 650 foot cul-de-sac street and one unit would have direct access to Holiday House Road. So it was brought up by John Swereth, planning commission member, John Swereth, that Holiday House is a dead end street and has no emergency access. And with the all the things we've been doing with with cul-de-sac length, if you consider this as a as a dead end room with with no emergency access, the point of the cul-de-sac should theoretically begin at Washington Avenue, which makes this cul-de-sac length much greater than what's allowed in the Souda. So we had a fair amount of discussion on that, you know, looking at different ways of finding some type of emergency access and easily somewhere. Didn't get very far with that, but we did let them know that it's probably something that the planning commission would not recommend waving the the cul-de-sac length. So there's some things to hash out there. Another thing, some other things we talked about were road improvements. They, you know, they didn't want to do a whole lot of road improvement on Holiday House Road. So that's something that staff is gonna have to discuss with them. And the other was, well, part of that was curb and sidewalk. It was suggested that they run curb and sidewalk all the way out to Washington. You know, we have the elementary street across elementary school across the street. You can probably assume that there's gonna be some schoolchildren in this development. So we thought it, you know, it'd be a nice safety issue to to clear up by having that run all the way out to Washington. I mean, that's it in a nutshell. They have, you know, they're looking for public water and public sewer. They've had discussion with both entities on that. I'm not exactly sure what the final outcome is of that. So again, that that is it in a nutshell. They're gonna try to hash things out with with township staff and come back to see us when they work some things out. So that was it with select properties. Any questions on that?
I have.
None?
None.
Okay. I know we just had some, we had some more discussion on the comp plan initiatives and didn't get very far, but we're continuing to talk about it. And that is all I have. And if it's all right, I have to get out of here. Something I have to do after this meeting. So I'm not gonna be around for the rest of the meeting unless you need me to consult them.
No, I think you did a great job, Chris.
Thank you.
You enjoy the rest of your evening. Hope you can handle the task you have. All right?
Thank you. I'm sure I can.
All right. With that said, I would entertain a motion for approval of the planning commission report as presented.
So move.
All right, motion been made by Hal.
I attended the meeting. No issues. I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Collingwood. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Nice to have it. Thank you, Chris. Enjoy your evening.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next committee report is Park and Rec. Mr. Dave Rice.
Dave cannot make it tonight, so I can give the report.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Okay, the Park and Rec Committee met last Thursday night, January 12th. The annual reorganization meeting was held. Dave Rice will remain as chair. Jody Cotter is vice chair and Maggie Oliver is secretary. Dave apologizes for the late notice of change of plans tonight, but something came up at the school. Justin Ginnati of Dynamic Engineering presented a proposal for a walking trail on the Drager property. All those in attendance liked the proposal for its proximity and accessibility to the Telford Lutheran Home community. We all thought it was a great idea. The annual fishing derby will be held Saturday, April 15th, 2023, hoping for great weather and another successful year of fishing. The Park and Rec plans on trying something new with a feature film and a fire, July 29th, 2023, a bonfire with a movie idea. Obviously, they have to get approvals and have the appropriate safety measures in place. This year's September Fest will be held Sunday, September 24th, 2023, looking forward to another year of sun and fun in the park with activities for all ages. And lastly, in search of, they are, the Park and Rec is in search of at least one new Park and Rec member, a voting member, and one alternate Park and Rec member on their committee. You'll find that we are having fun and have a great time sharing the events for the community.
Very well. And that is on the, you do have that advertised as well on our website, right, Greg? Yep, thank you. Okay, any questions for Greg on that report?
I have no questions.
Okay, I have no questions. I do like, I'm glad to see the trail. I remember for the subdivision near there that that's been a long looking longstanding interest to connect Quarry Road over to Lutheran Homes, to the ball fields, to the library. So good to see that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval then of the Park and Rec.
So me and David Collingwood.
Second.
Yep, second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Greg. Next on the agenda, moving forward is the tax collector's report. Suzanne Clark, how are you? Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped. I apologize for that. The next on the agenda is the commission reports, and I need to to address the police commission report from Chief Paul Dickinson. Hey, chief, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How's everybody doing? I have December 2022 activity report for the Penridge Regional Police Department. Police Department responded to 672 calls for service in the month of December. 283 of those calls were in East Rock Hill Township, 389 were in West Rock Hill Township. We also handled 31 traffic crashes. Of those crashes, 18 were were reportable crashes and 13 were non-reportable crashes, with nine of them occurring in East Rock Hill and the remaining 22 occurring in West Rock Hill Township. Officers responded to 12 Part 1 crimes and 22 Part 2 crimes for a total of 34 crimes in the month of December. The reported crimes consisted of in East Rock Hill Township, five thefts, one assault, two criminal mischief, one corruption of a minor, one narcotics complaint, one allegation of child abuse, a DUI crash, a disturbance, one trespassing complaint, and then we have three ordinance report violations. Two of them were dog laws. Their last remaining one was a fireworks complaint. In West Rock Hill Township, we had a report of one burglary, two thefts, one allegation of sexual assault against a minor, an iconist complaint, three DUI crashes, four disturbances, one disorderly conduct report, one trespassing report, and then ordinance violation of a dog law violation. Then our criminal charges filed in the month of December, the 26 total charges were filed, five of them were DUIs, one charge of recklessly endangering another person, two charges of possession of a narcotic, one charge of possession of narcotic paraphernalia, one citation issued for a dog law violation, two burglary, two charges of burglary, two charges of conspiracy to commit burglary, two charges of criminal trespassing, two charges of conspiracy to commit criminal trespass, two charges of theft, and two charges of conspiracy to commit theft. Two charges of receiving stolen property, and then two more charges of conspiracy to receive stolen property. And then there are other police activities for the month of December. We had 154 traffic enforcement details conducted, issued 23 traffic citations and 18 traffic warnings, 15 school checks, 96 park checks, three foot patrols, and officers attended 121 hours of training. So our report for the end of the year totals for 2022, we responded to 8,868 calls for service. We handled 303 traffic crashes. We responded to 458 offenses reported to the police department, filed 264 criminal charges, and our officers attended 1,421 hours of training in the year of 2022. So we're moving on to 2023 with, you know, some new things going on in the department and we're looking forward to all the changes. So, thank you.
Everyone's frozen up.
I can say I think someone froze.
Chief, I'll make a comment while we're waiting for Jay to come back. It looks like there was a significant increase in criminal charges from 21 to 22. It almost doubled.
Yes.
Means you're doing a better job, right?
Well, yes, yes, exactly. I was calling with it. Exactly. No, I think it's a combination of your generational officers and, you know, as they, the longer they're there and the more they develop, the better criminal investigations they do and the more charges they file. So it's all kudos to the guys and the work that they're doing every day. So.
Well done. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks to the guys who are out there all day.
Yes, sir.
I was waiting for, I was waiting for Jay to come back. I mentioned I was reading the public works report and I mentioned they fixed the flagpole and Penridge Regional. So let's see that the
I'm glad some can fix it.
Our guys can do anything. Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff you can fix with the back though. Okay, so we lost Steve? No.
Jay's back.
There we go.
You're muted, Jay. You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. I apologize. I was, I saw everybody froze up and I was trying to identify that everybody was froze up and I couldn't get through to you. Nevertheless, we're back in business, I think.
Yeah, we had a good discussion about the police report.
Okay, good. So that being said, can I entertain a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the regional police report as presented, David Collingwood.
Okay, motion. Thank you. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now the next on the agenda is the Joint Rec Authority. Dan Dietz, are you there?
I am here.
Hi, Jan.
Hi. I am going to go over everything with you. First thing on our agenda in our January, yeah, in our January meeting was we did our reorganization for 2023. I resigned as chairperson of the authority. I am going to be taking over the position as pool manager. So with that being said, we have nominated, we opened up nominations for chair as well as co-chairperson because Craig Stevens, who resigned in December, was the co-chairperson. Kevin Dietz was nominated and was voted unanimously to fill that position. So Kevin Dietz will be the chairperson of the Joint Rec Authority. Hal Shermer was nominated for co-chairperson and was voted unanimously, and he will fill that position. We had an open vacancy since Craig Stevens left on the Sellersville side for the board. Sellersville Borough Council approved Don Krathamel, who had applied, and he is a councilman for Sellersville. A vote was taken and we accepted Don to filling the vacant position representing Sellersville Borough. So that is our reorganization for 2023. So this will be your last meeting with me, everyone. The 2023 budget was voted on and passed unanimously. Each one of you have a copy. I have an updated copy that I will drop off to Greg, Greg, so he can give to you. We did finally finalize the 2023 pool membership fees. I believe each one of you has a worksheet for that. They are all ready to go. I'm just waiting for a couple of things to be posted on the Sellersville Borough website, such as an updated application. And as soon as that's done, the mailings will go out. Um, we had our final discussions with Future Stars Day Camp, who will be having camp with Faith Christian Academy. He came out, did a site visit. There will be an agreement being drawn up and a deposit to follow. I would like Mary to look over the agreement for us before we sign it and make a final commitment to that. We are actively preparing and I have already started to look for lifeguards, front desk person, an assistant manager, and someone to lease out the snack stand. Emma is not going to be doing it this year. So we are, I'm planning on advertising and having a job fair sometime in February. So I will get some information out there onto the website and see what we can get through. Also, Michael from the Future Stars Day Camp has offered, they have two locations, one in Doylestown and one up by Cedar Crest College that offers the certifications. And we can do that through a discounted rate with him. So, which I thought was great that he offered that to us. So we are up and in the process of moving on with the pool opening. We we have everything lined up, I think, pretty much. And I will have a step by step that I'll turn over to Kevin for your next meeting as to all of the improvements, the changes, the timeframes that they will be done. So we can do this in a timely fashion. Last thing that we, I want to go over with you is that we met with Dan Preston, who's the Director of Assets for North Penn Water Authority in regards to a tank placement on the property at the Holiday House pool. So we are ongoing in discussions with him. So when there is something new to report, we will let you know. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us and we will try to give you what information we know at this point. Other than that, oh, lastly, Grandview Hospital had reached out to Hal because we had offered the parking lot for them to use for overflow parking. It's being used for the employee parking and they have a shuttle there. So if anybody goes by and sees a shuttle bus, yes, you're not seeing things. It is there. And the lights have been reconnected in the parking lot. So we have parking lot lights now for them. And they were willing to pay for their portion of the electric bill for the lights to be on for them. And we are working some other things out with them, what they can do to compensate us. So I just wanted to let you know if you see cars parked there, they are to be there. Other than that, do you have any questions for me?
Any of my fellow board members have any questions for Jan?
I do. Jan, I read somewhere, because I went back through and I looked at your meeting minutes from December and from January, and I read your executive summary. I went through every bit of information you've submitted to us and I thank you. Your membership goal is 220. Is that still the number you're looking for?
I'm actually looking for 400.
400.
That's what I am looking for. Realistically, I'm saying I'm hoping for 300 realistically, but 400 is my goal.
Great. You said you're, you're starting to look for lifeguards. When you talk about compensation, I think I saw a
We're starting at $18 an hour for a first year guard.
Okay, because I had seen something like 1044 and the competition was 11. And I was wondering how competitive you were going to be with other pools or with the fast food restaurants or
We are very competitive.
And what was that number again?
$18 per hour.
Okay, thank you.
And I did check with Michael Rush, who does do the camps, and they have their own lifeguards. And I threw some numbers around to him and he said, we're right in that ballpark. So that made me feel better.
And how many lifeguards do you need?
We should have to have a good backing. I would say somewhere between 15 to 17.
There, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jan, I have one question for you regarding the feasibility study.
Yes.
Are we, are we, do you have any information regarding that or?
Right now, I am, I am waiting for Joe Phillips from Phillips and Donovan Architects to meet with me over at the pool. And he is going to do a walk around with me. So he and tell us where we are from where they were in 2010 to where we are today. He doesn't, he knows that we're, the situation that we're in financially, and he doesn't want to charge us for that part. So we were, this is how we're going to handle that. So as soon as any, when I can meet with him, I will pass the information on to Kevin and he can report that to you.
Okay, thank you. The other, I only had one other question and that was, and you probably have it somewhere. I don't have it right in front of me. The, the, you increased the season ticket this year?
Yes, we did.
Can you tell me what, what you moved that, that number, where that number is, what the cost is going to be?
So a resident ticket, we started to, we changed. If you can remember, it always started with a family of four. And we compared Menlo, Quaker Town, as well as Alka Mixon into that comparison when we worked this up. So we decided to go down to a family of two like the other three entities do. So a resident for a family of two would be $170. For three would be $225. For four would be $280 and onward. That goes down to a family of six, which would be $410. And then any additional above the family of six is $25. A single would be $85. A senior citizen, we put at 75. And children under three, of course, are free. Menlo this year, it will be charging $55 for senior citizens. They are no longer free. Well, Menlo's pricing is they are for a family of four, they're $330, we're $280. Quaker Town is $285. So we're right in that ballpark.
Okay. Well, then you did some homework there anyway, for sure. Regarding, regarding, you had just mentioned a little while ago that you were shooting for 300 season tickets, possibly maybe 400. What did you, what did you, what are you figuring on when you say that? What are you figuring on? Are they going to be four persons, two persons, three persons, or don't you really know?
I don't really know. I kind of calculated it out at four persons because that seems to be the magic number. But, you know, that's, that's what I calculated it out at.
Okay. All right.
I have one more question, if I may.
Sure.
Yes, I'm gonna go back to the lifeguards again. I know you're actively, or we actively seeking them. What is your, you have a timeline as to when you expect to know when you'll have
What is your, you have a timeline as to when you expect to know when you'll have a lifeguard? You're starting that process right now, you're advertising right now?
Absolutely. I have four applications already.
Okay, but at what point do you feel that you will have enough information to know that you will have enough lifeguards to open the pool? Do you have a, a, a drop dead date on that yet?
Well, I'm looking, it's, it's hard to tell. I am looking, I want to get these applications through and processed and approved. And then I'm hoping by April 1st, we should have a good handle on that. Or sooner. So, because I have to get their certifications in and have them ready.
Okay. Appreciate it, and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay, you're welcome.
And a couple of my follow-up questions are, and this is going to be also mirrored on the West Rock Hill Township Holiday House page, correct?
Correct, it is. And I'm going to drop some applications off at the office for Greg to have there. If someone comes in for the, for a pool application, and it will also be posted on the Facebook page.
And we are going to get, is this going to also go into the, is this going to be ready for the township newsletter?
Yes, yes, Greg will have his, his information by the deadline. And it will also be in the Sellersville Borough newsletter. And lastly, today I work very diligently, and I have in the works, I'm negotiating back and forth for three donate and dine-in donates. One with JT Bankers, one with the White Horse Tavern, and the other is, I'm back and forth about a breakfast time. So, with someone, so we'll have to work that out. But I'm doing that, and I was, I will talk to David. I was wondering maybe if we could have a flea market while you guys have your trout fishing? If we could do something in the park, but other than that, that's it.
Okay.
I did have one, I guess, thank you, because I think the, looking through over the last year, I think we're now up to almost below five figures of sweat equity and donations from members of the public towards Holiday House. I just want to say thank you to everybody who's worked really hard on that.
We have had so many outside donations to help us with equipment use. You know, everybody, anybody I've asked, they've been there. And I'm, and I'm very thankful, and that is going to be continued through this year. There are going to be some changes up there. So, you know, that is important.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jan.
You're welcome. Sorry, I was so long-winded.
Oh, that's okay.
Appreciate it, appreciate the information.
Information, yes, very positive information. Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Joint Rec Authority report.
I will make that motion, David Collingwood.
I will second it.
Second it, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on. Next, now we get to the tax collector's report, Suzanne Clark.
Now it's my turn. I didn't want to jump ahead anybody. Okay, obviously, for the month of January, I have not collected any taxes because tax bills had to be satisfied for 2022 by December 31st. I will tell you that I did file my liens January the 4th. For our annual taxes, I sent $7,021.49 in annual tax liens down to Bucks County. For 2022 interim tax bills, $401.05. 2021 tax bills, interims, $36.19. And I leaned one streetlight tax for $32.37. So my total liens that I sent down to the county was $7,491.10. So that's, that's the highlight of my report, because I have collected no money for January, obviously.
Okay. Well, we thank you for the information, anyway. Any questions, please, Suzanne?
No questions.
Without entertaining a motion for approval report, motion's been made?
Second, David Collingwood.
All those signify by saying aye? Aye? Let's have it. Thank you. Motion carries. Thanks, Suzanne. And moving forward, then, next on the agenda is the engineers' report, Mr. Steve Baller. How are you?
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman. We have one item on the agenda, line lot adjustment. I believe we have Mrs. Klein, reader engineer, on the call. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm here. I'm Tyler from Mice Engineering, and I'm here representing Mrs. Klein and her project here tonight.
Why don't you give them a little overview of the project, Tyler?
All right, Steve. So Mrs. Klein owns four tax parcels located between Bethune Pike and Smokey Lane. Green Top Road would be just to the south of the project site area. So right now, there's lots average an area between, somewhere between a third of an acre and one acre. And what Mrs. Klein is looking to do is consolidate these four lots into two lots that are more compliant than what, how they exist now. The one lot line currently goes through the barn, and we're going to clean that up. That's the, the main issue here. The planning commission recommended approval at their December meeting, and that is why we are here before you tonight. So I have a letter here from Steve dated November 17th of 2022. And all of the comments except for two are will complies. One is the waivers, and one is a question for the solicitor that I know me and Steve had discussed previously. So if you guys have any questions, I'll answer them. Other than that, we can get into those two comments.
I have no questions. You move forward. Either my two stellar supervisors have any questions?
I have no questions.
I intended leading, I have no questions, David Collingwood.
Okay, thank you.
No questions, I was watching the meeting.
You may proceed, Tyler.
All right. So the one question I have is with comment number five. So Steve is pointing out the potential need for a deed consolidation prior to plan recording. However, we had a similar situation come up in Hilltown Township where one client had several tax parcels that were going through a subdivision. And we did not have to go through a deed of consolidation because that one person owns all of these parcels as they exist. So I want to clarify that either this is needed or it's not needed, just because it would save our client a step here if we don't have to do this.
If that's, is that the question for me?
Correct.
Yeah, I think you need to do the deeds of consolidation, because you're creating two lots. And, and I think you, I think it's in your client's best interest to do them, but the township also requires it. You don't have to record them before the plan's recorded. You can prepare them and then give us copies of the recorded deeds, because they probably won't take the recorded deeds until the plan's recorded.
Okay, so you're just one. So what are you looking for then, when we submit these final plans? Just the, the description for the outbound areas then for the two new lots, and that's sufficient then?
Because she owns all of it?
Yeah.
It probably will be. I don't see, usually in a lot change, you have the little sliver going from this one to that one. But that won't be the case here. Steve, do you have any other thoughts on that?
No, I generally agree with you, and I think Tyler and I had this discussion earlier that, you know, to document these two final lots, they should be recorded. I think, though, Mary, are you asking that they give you a draft copy of a final deed or just a legal description for a deed?
No, the deed.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, Tyler. It would actually be a, a copy of a prepared deed. It just doesn't need to be recorded until after the plan is recorded.
Okay, all right.
Is there any other questions, Tyler?
No, the only other items are the waivers.
Okay, and the, the two waivers were just
Yeah, there's three. The first is from the plan scale to allow for the plan scale to be at 1 and G equals 40 instead of 1 and G equals 50. The second is a waiver from road improvements since no development is proposed. And the third is from curbs and sidewalks, since again, no development is proposed.
Right. And the planning commission recommended granting those waivers. And under our current policy, since there's no new lots being created, generally no contribution associated with the waivers. But I guess unless the supervisors have any particular questions, it would be appropriate to direct Mary to prepare the approval resolution for your next meeting.
Okay, I don't have any further questions. Mr. Collingwood or Mr. Shermer?
No questions, David Collingwood.
No questions. I think it makes sense just direct for Mary to start on this. Hal Shermer.
All right, so I would, I would echo Hal's comments and have Mary move forward with preparing for next month.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Tyler, I have one, Tyler, I have one other cleanup item. Our review period only goes to the beginning of February. Could you get us an extension letter till the end of the month, so it covers the next meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that is all I have for my report, unless there's any questions.
No questions. I'll make a motion to approve the engineer's report as presented.
No question, I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is the source report, Mary Everly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The first item under the solicitors' report is the adoption of the codification ordinance. You know, we've been working on the codification for quite some time. It is an ordinance that allows all of our existing ordinances to be combined. And, why is everyone laughing at me? Combined and renumbered into one manuscript, which will also be available online. This ordinance has been reviewed by the planning commission. They found a, a number of little items that need to be fixed, so have, so have Greg and I. And that'll come soon after the adoption of this ordinance. But it is before you, it's been advertised for a public hearing. So if you're so inclined, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing and ask for any public comment on the ordinance.
Okay, I will do that. At this time, I'll open up public hearing on ordinance number 246, codification. Is there any public comment, questions, concerns regarding this ordinance? I do not see any on my screen. Greg, do you see any?
There's none.
Okay. That being said, I guess we would like to move forward with this. Is that correct, Mary?
Right, and you would do that by making a motion to adopt ordinance number 246.
So moved, David Collingwood.
All right, motion's been made? I will second it?
Oh, okay.
Just for the record, I, I will second that. All those signify by saying aye? Aye? Okay, motion carries for ordinance 246, codification.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, I'd like to skip to the third item on the report. And that's the Veris Conditional Preliminary Plan Approval. You reviewed this at your meeting last month. We prepared a draft of a resolution consistent with your review. The applicant has sent us an email indicating that their clients accept the conditions. So if you're inclined to adopt the resolution, you could do that by making a motion to adopt resolution 202303.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 202303?
So moved.
Correct.
Okay, motion's been made?
I'll second it, David Collingwood.
Seconded by Mr. Collingwood, all those signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Let's have it, okay?
Thank you. And then the last item on the solicitors' report, also at the last meeting, you had a lengthy discussion on whether or not to allow Wawa to have 24-hour operation. You discussed a number of conditions at that meeting, and staff worked on a resolution embodying those conditions and fleshing them out a bit. We sent it to the applicant, who had some comments on those conditions. And there is a draft resolution, the latest of which I sent around this afternoon, if, if you're interested.
I think we are. There was a couple of things that I had some hesitation on yet, and that was the, the one thing there was the amount of spaces for, for added spaces for landscape, for personnel, landscape trucks and stuff for parking. I don't know the exact number, and I, I would like to defer that to when land development would take place, I believe.
Okay, we have, but Greg and I came up with some language to address that. And instead of having a specific number, that condition read, there shall be sufficient oversized parking spaces to accommodate landscape vehicles with trailers without encouraging a great deal of truck traffic. The exact number of oversized parking spaces and the methods used to discourage excessive truck traffic shall be determined by the mutual agreement of the applicant and the township at the time of land development review.
Okay, that sounds fair.
This would give you time, give us all time to go out to other convenience stores and count how many exist at, at places that seem to work without turning them into a truck stop.
Yes. The other, the other thing that comes to my mind, Mary, that I have, was pretty adamant about, was having no deliveries, of course, over, from the hours of, I think it was, we discussed 11 o'clock and 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock?
Right, it was, it was 10. I think right now, the resolution reads 10 to 6. They, their fuel deliveries are set on a, an automatic schedule, so that when the fuel pump gets to a certain level, the truck comes out. So they can't necessarily control those. Well, maybe can't, it's not the right word. The normal Wawa operation doesn't necessarily
I was going to say, I was going to say, Mary, I see, I see many fuel deliveries at Wawa's during the day when I work. And I've, I've frequently have visited Wawa's from any time from 6 o'clock in the morning until 10 o'clock at night, and I've seen fuel deliveries during those hours. So I guess it's just a logistics thing. And if there is a mechanism that says that they're low, can't somebody plan that? It's just, it's just a question. I'm not saying that, that it's out of the question that they couldn't have fuel deliveries. I'm just, I'm making a general comment of, of, that should be a planning issue there from management standpoint.
Well, I think it'll naturally occur that most of the fuel deliveries happen in the day, because that's mostly when people fuel up their cars. There is not a lot of fueling activity between the hours of 10 and 6 compared to, say, 10 o'clock on a Saturday morning. So whatever that level is, is more likely to be triggered during the day than it is at night.
Okay. All right. Well, those were the, those were the two main items that's concerning. Of course, you knew that, you know that it, the language is in there for the no advertisements. At the pumps.
Right.
Oh, there was one, one very key thing that comes to my mind now that I had brought up after the meeting, and that was the unattended of a, of a fuel pump, as I indicated to Greg to share with, with the, the folks from Wawa. And that was people going to the pump, putting their nozzle in the car, turning it on and going in the store shopping, going to the bathroom, ordering their food, while that pump is unattended. I want to eliminate that. I don't want that, it shouldn't be happening at any Wawa. I don't want it happening in a Wawa in West Rock Hill Township. That's my perspective.
The applicant happily agreed to that condition. So there is a, a provision of the resolution that reads, "There shall be signage reminding customers that cars may not be left attended when pumping gas."
Thank you.
That's unattended, not in, attended.
Yeah, unattended, yep. Okay.
I have one comment to bootstrap off of what Jay mentioned. I would be comfortable, well, I would be comfortable making, you know, a little bit of leeway for the fuel deliveries. For years, we had an office in Telford, right on Main Street and Route 152 by what's now the Circle K. It's now the karate place. And usually, the fuel delivery was fairly quiet, fairly innocuous, rather different from most of the food deliveries. So I think if that's on an automatic schedule, we could, I think we can accommodate that or figure out something.
Okay. Mr. Collingwood, do you have any questions?
I have some comments. I have some comments. Yeah, I, I saw the revise, the latest edition of the resolution. I read it. I agree with it. I think the original one, the, the fuel deliveries were ten o'clock. No deliveries from ten o'clock PM until seven AM and it's been changed to six AM. I'm okay with that. I, 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 I think that. Most of the world, the working world is up and running by six AM. At least they're in the shower. The one thing that did bother me that didn't happen, we, we talked about the neighborhood survey. We saw. Information from a realtor. We saw information from Mr. Lippincott. They did a survey. And they called it a neighborhood survey and one area that they did not. Address, which I think they should have, is their neighbors across the street at the. Anne Reno Mobile Home Park. I mean, there, there's fifty sites there. There are a lot of people there that are directly across the street. From the lights, from the trucks, from everything that we're talking about here. And I just, I think it's a shame that they weren't included in that survey. The second issue I have, I will not be addressed tonight, but I think it has to be addressed as that if. And I say if this project moves forward, will be that the intersection and the fact that eastbound traffic coming out of Telford. Wanting to make a, a left-hand turn on the Meeting House Road. It, it's gonna, we have to make provisions for that to be able to occur. Because no, everybody's gonna go around on a berm and that's where. A lot of people are gonna wanna park their trucks if they're allowed to and idle and run and get whatever they get from. Wawa. But those are my two comments. I'm okay with the resolution and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. All right, Mary.
If you're inclined to adopt that draft of the resolution, you could do so by making a motion to adopt. Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash oh four.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt that resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh four.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it then.
Okay, Hal made the motion. Mr. Collingwood second it. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That is all I have for the solicitor's report unless you have other questions.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to. Approve the solicitor's report as presented, David Collingwood.
Seconded, Hal Shermer.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving, moving on from this list report, next on the agenda is the Township Manager Report. Mr. Lippincott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only item on my report is the hybrid meeting room approval. In your packet, you have two quotes. One is for thirty-one thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars for a projector system. And the other one is thirty thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars for a TV system. Over the past month, the board had an opportunity to view the YouTube channels of Doylestown Borough and Township and Lower Providence. Also, David Collingwood and myself went down to Doylestown Township and Doylestown Borough and took a tour of the facilities. During that tour, they highly recommended AVT, the people that made the. Proposal. And if the board so wishes, they can give a recommendation. Or if you have any questions.
Okay, I, I have a question regarding the, the, the difference in the, in the projector to the TV. What is, I mean, more people could see the projector or could more people see the TV? Is, is it the same?
Well, it, it's funny that you say that because Doylestown Borough has the projectors and Doylestown Township has the televisions. I think the televisions give you a wider range of. Ability to see during the daytime. I think you always have to kind of turn off the lights when it comes to the projectors. That's the, that. And probably technology a little bit different because then you can just stick things into the AV systems and then you can have more inputs. Those would be the two things that are different, rather than climbing up to the projector.
Right. Okay, Mr. Collingwood or Mr. Shermer, you have it? Either one of you have any concern?
I, I, having gone and seen both, both systems and they, they, I think that. AVT does a great job in, in, in both facilities. I would personally prefer the TVs. I, I think that whatever system we develop, we have to think about the future. And to me, the projectors may be something that is somewhat, not saying it's a relic, but I think. That the TVs moving forward may be adaptable to more and better technologies. As this whole thing evolves. That's just my personal opinion. Having seen both, they both worked extremely well. They looked great. They sounded great. I think it's the right thing to do as a township.
Mr. Shermer, you have any comments or concerns one way or another?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to mention that, uh, actually was back and forth down in Doylestown, so. Right after we first started discussing this, I stopped in and saw both Doylestown Township and Doylestown Borough. And like I said, both of those did seem to be in really good shape. They worked really well and. But I do agree that especially with the way that our township building is set up with the big glass window in the meeting room. Different from the borough and the township, that the television makes more sense because if it's gonna be a super, if you're gonna have a meeting at seven o'clock. In June, July, August, you're not gonna be able to see anything unless you put blackout screens up. So I think the TV would be a better choice just because of the differences between our building with big glass windows and. The Doylestown and Borough, which is their meeting rooms are sort of buried inside of the big building. Now, but otherwise, the recommendations for the contractors seem to be good. It's gonna be good to get back to. Having people in seats and it's been, you know, what, thirty-something years since we've updated all of the equipment and the mics and it's probably about time.
Yeah. Yes, okay. Well, with that being said, I think.
I, I, if you guys want to do it, I would need a motion that you use American Rescue Plan funds. For this because we're not taking this out of the general fund.
No, the, I think the intent was all along was to use the funds from there. That's what our proposal was, for sure. I, of course, would like to get back to public meetings regardless of this, doing this in, in, you know. Conjunction with, with going back to public meetings, but we will discuss that later too. So. What we need to do, what we need to do is make a motion to move forward with this, Greg, and use the funds from.
The American Rescue Plan.
American Rescue Funds?
Correct.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to move forward with this?
So moved.
Okay, Hal made a motion.
I'll second David Collingwood.
All right, seconded by Mr. Collingwood. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And we will be using TVs.
Correct.
Okay.
I only have one other item. I'd like to thank Mary for all her hard work when it came to codification. It was a long process. And it was three years and she did a fantastic job and I wanted to say thank you to her.
You got it. I share that same. Thank you.
Just remember that when you go through it and see the typos.
I'll, I'll thank you every time I make a right turn at great peaks going up towards. The Cory Road that I don't have to stop at that stop sign. Right turn. I love it. Thank you very much.
That's okay. The art typos, those are made sure to make sure nobody photocopies it. It doesn't give you credit.
That's all I have.
Okay, very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the manager's report.
So moved.
Seconded, David Collingwood.
Seconded. All those signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is old business? Anybody have any old business?
I have none.
I just wanna bring up one thing and that it was, we had discussed this. And that was getting back to public meetings. I know that we're, we're started the process now with this, with this hybrid thing, but I also would like to. Move forward as far as. Getting back into our meeting room and holding public meetings. I do know that it'll be a challenge as far as the amount of people that'll be able to be in there. But I just want you to think about it and we can discuss it again next month if you'd like. Okay?
No, agreed. Good idea.
Okay. All right, anybody have any public comment? I mean, I should say new business?
No new business.
None, thank you, David Collingwood.
Okay. The new business, one thing I wanna point out is the condition of some roads. I was driving around. Greg and I met with it, with the county to look over the bridge on Old, Old Mill Road there and Old Mill is in pretty rough shape. The, the road itself needs to have some, some attention done to it. So I'd like to at least put that out there to the board and. Think about this. Greg, think about it as far as, you know, what's, what's it gonna cost? You know, when can we do it? You know, what, what funds are available, so on and so forth. Just think about that for, till next month and, and then we can have another discussion about it, if that's possible.
Yeah, the only thing I would make on that, Mr. Kaiser, and I agree with you, that's a really bad road, especially after you cross the bridge. I don't know that. Any kind, I think it's gonna have to be a complete restoration and that, that is gonna get expensive. Because that road is just, there's just nothing there. If we, if we blacktop over everything, it's not gonna last.
That, that is true.
Yeah, okay. Something we have to look at.
Yep, and the, you know, the, the county's not gonna do anything with the bridge. They say the bridge is in fine shape and they're not, it's not on the, it's not on the radar to be replaced. So the other thing to think about is it's only a ten-ton bridge too, that. The, the, the.
Does that restrict the Wilcox trucks coming in?
That the business, the businesses here, I, I wasn't gonna say, but Wilcox, Wilcox's business, the trucks can only go in and out from Forest Road in and out. They can't go across the bridge to go the other way. So that's another challenge that's gonna be on our, on our list. Is how do we, how do we accomplish that too? So anyway, just some thought, okay? Looking forward to the future. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Anybody got any public comment? Please identify yourself. I don't see anything on my screen. Greg, you have any emails?
Yes, Shirley Miller. I don't know if Shirley Miller wants to give her. If not, I will read it. Shirley Miller, Tower Road. My public comment would be a request that the, addressing the issue of short-term rentals in the township be reopened.
Oh, okay, yes. That is something that was on, I, I actually forgot about that myself. That is something that we had discussed and we dropped around COVID, I think it was, wasn't it?
Yeah, we decided we were gonna wait until we went back publicly and met in a meeting to open up this discussion.
Yeah, okay. So that is something we need to think about too.
Yes.
All right. Comment is well taken. Anything else, Greg?
Uh, the next is John Romeo. Do you want to give your public comment or would you like me to read it? Uh, I take it he wants me to read it. John Romeo, Lonely Road. As for the cons, as for the conservation committee, Hal Shermer seems dead on having trails. In the proposed map, the trail will be three thousand three hundred feet of the thirty-six plus of road frontage. I have then it goes off and runs another thousand feet through my front yard. He portrays to have the interest of the township. But that's not entirely true as the quarry, nobody wanted to expand it, got to expand the help of Shermer. Selling Naesville eleven point one four acres for his own benefit. This project is going to be a huge financial burden to the lawsuits coming their way, not to mention civil suits. My home is totally private and we would lose that. The township doesn't have the funds to make the popular swimming pool up to date. But wants to add these trails to the maintenance crew, police department and the neighbors themselves. Hoping this gets dropped or rerouted. An already public location. My dogs will not like people walking through our yard, either will I. There's a lot better places to put money and I have better things to spend money on than improved properties. The appeal as you drive by. I do not want to spend it on legal fees.
Okay. Very, all right. So that's public comment. We will take that under advisement. All right, any other public comment?
That was.
Okay. Very good. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjournment and go into executive session.
So moved.
Seconded, Hollywood.
Motion made in second. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for attending. Appreciate your input.
And see y'all again in ten minutes.
See everybody from the public meeting in February.
Thanks for coming.
Have a good night.